Yes, yeah, it's rotating.
I never get, I never see the other one.
Uh, oh, it is based on a coin flip, so might be for your case, it's not happening.
I don't know, I, it's hard to flip a coin twenty times in a row and get heads twenty times in a row. Something, something doesn't seem right.
So might be earlier, we had three notifications and we were using that, so might be we need to change the logic. Yes, I can see first one commented, but that's why it's going, like, we might decide to check.
Yeah, will you check? Can you see when the last time? The alternate one was sent, the one, you know, that I didn't circle?
Okay, okay.
Cause maybe the stats you're looking at, are those all time stats or are those? Up to the, uh, just last thirty days?
All time starts.
Right, how many, which ones were sent thirty days?
I will tell you one that.
Maybe, maybe only one. Cause I've, I've only gotten that one where the finger is pointing at you. That's the only one I've got out of the two. I got like ten in the last year.
You win last time it sent now how we can got it. Jerry is there?
Yeah.
Jerry, is there a way we can get it when a template ID sent last time?
I cannot get the last time we sent the template easily.
Todd, have you ever gotten the alternate? Um, event, like your friends going to an event notification? Todd.
I can tell John, at least from what one signal says, is that they're pretty much fifty fifty.
Uh, yeah, but I'm getting twenty in a row with the same one. I don't even, I don't think I've ever seen the other one. I mean, I think I have in the long ago past.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. Um, I'm just saying what one signal is reporting.
Okay. I know, I saw that too. Amit and Todd shared that with me as well. Um, but that's all time, right?
It is all time.
So that's misleading. Cause what about the last thirty days, you know?
I understand. Um, but still all time though, it is fairly even.
One second.
Yeah, cause there is one that we disabled because that one did not have a great click through rate. Sorry.
It's okay, go ahead. You were saying?
Yeah, because we, we started with three and then we disabled one because they didn't have a good click through. And we kept with two of them. And still they both, one sent four thousand forty-one, the other one sent forty-four ninety-two.
Huh, yeah, no, I saw the numbers, but I just don't. See alternates.
I understand. Yeah, that's not something that we can check easily. One signal does not enable us to do that.
Yeah.
We are not logging anywhere now also, so template ID, it will be hard to find it.
Yeah, right.
Also test it.
I got. Um, yeah, like I got the one that the, the finger pointing, uh, fourteen.
Yeah, that's. Right, I only see that one. Have you ever gotten the other one?
Oh, they both, they both have the finger pointing, John.
So there's something wrong?
No, okay, so one says, are you going to join? Tap here to see the details. And the other says tap here before the FOMO kicks in.
Yeah, one sec, let me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but one has a clock and one doesn't. Though I get to keep getting the one with a clock and the one with FOMO and all caps.
I see, yeah. Um, and, and it looks like I received that one twice as well.
So yeah, something's telling me that it's just that one. I mean, it has to be. I mean, if you put the coin twenty times, you're gonna. Get heads or tails once.
Uh, but Jerry, I think we commented out here one and we are using math dot random function. For two, I think we need to, we are using the ultimate approach. So I think we need to change this one. If you will go to see chat utility line number one three eight two. That we use for three notification, but we commented out here. Might be fine flip now.
Hold on, we're. And through that, yeah, let's see. Yeah, we're doing, we're doing a flip here. I can see that. Tap here, FOMO kicks in. Um, I found that and. What group is this, are they, are they testing with? Yeah, cause I can't tell when was the last time something was sent, but. We could try the testing group.
Wait, you can, you can tell when those notifications were sent, right?
Not easily.
Really?
One signal just gives you a. Last time I talked to one signal about it, they're like, oh, you can, you know, build your own dashboard. Like, dang, that's a, it's a big project in itself.
Yeah.
When we will test it live for like.
Yeah, go ahead and, yeah, run some tests. Um, yeah, we want a dashboard anyway, right? Because that can let, let us queue. So in, like, let's say ten people react within ten seconds. We don't need to send ten notifications. We can say. One notification that ten people reacted.
Right?
Right? Would that work? Or is that what, would that be part of it?
Where, where are you giving us? So you said one notification?
No, no, we, we talked about this once time. So if I got ten reactions in, within ten seconds.
Hmm, oh yeah, you get one notification.
Yeah, we just would want one notification that says you got ten reactions.
That's different from dashboard.
Okay.
Dashboard is literally, I mean, to be, it could be its own startup. It could be its own startup to build a dashboard for it.
What, we're going to this dashboard?
You, like.
Cause they have a dashboard, obviously.
Yeah, it's not great.
Yeah.
Like, I, I would wanna filter by template. I would wanna see click through on templates. I wanna, I would wanna see lifetime. Notification logs per user. These are really like critical data points that one signal does not give us.
Um, I'd be interested in doing a ticket with them for exactly what you just said. And see if that is possible, so. Click through on templates. Lifetime notification, logs per user. Filter by template, um.
Last time I told, I asked him that, I'm pretty sure they were just like, make your own dashboard.
Yeah, sometimes you talk to the wrong person, you know, like, I would just do a ticket with them and ask them those three things. And see, you might, might be surprised, maybe one of them is, oh yeah, just, yeah, you do it. Cause that seems ridiculous. They have the data, obviously.
Yep.
So. When you say filter by template, what does that mean?
So for, um, I'm just gonna say very, give you a demonstration of what. Me as somebody trying to get information from one signal, what I'd wanna see. So. You can see my screen?
Yeah.
I would want to click in one of these templates. I'd wanna see some things. I would wanna see a change log, or this is not, this is for an email.
By the way, Amit, I just got the one with the envelope emoji with the heart on the envelope. I thought we, um, we actually. We don't use that one, right?
We're talking about, uh, an event?
Yeah.
Pause one of the three.
Or maybe that was just for the invite? Or is that?
Yeah, cause the, the one that we canceled is this one with the calendar.
Calendar when we canceled.
Yeah, that one was getting low.
But, uh, yeah, okay, taking this for example, what I'd like to do is I would like to see a change log. I'd like to see all the changes that have been done to this template. Uh, saying, oh, we changed the body from this to this on May seventeenth. And I'd like to see a, a log, like a, a, a log that's literally. Uh, where is it? Basically, what is it? This dash, this graph, this chart here? But filtered only to this selected template ID. And then for that template ID, in there, I would like to filter, send messages. By that template ID.
Yeah, and you're, you made this template through their dashboard, right? Like, this is their dashboard?
Yep.
Okay, so you can't add columns to this? What happens if you hit three dots?
Where?
On far right?
Here?
Can't see where your cursor is. The very, very farthest right three.
Oh, oh, I'm only sharing one tab, that's why, sorry. Yeah.
Here?
Yeah. What does edit do?
Well, this is an email, sorry. Let me go to a push, uh. Templates, push, okay.
What are, what are those integrations they have?
I think Ismael has his hand raised. He said he had to leave early today. We wanna check with him.
Yeah, I got a lot of ground to cover with it, Ismael. What's up?
Yeah, so I just wanna go over a few things about that silence notification thing, um, for, um. So a few questions I had, um, I had the UI implemented, um. Okay. Let's share my screen real quick.
Ah, you need a query. You have the mutation, but you need a query to get that data.
Talking to me?
Uh, yeah, I just realized you need a query to get that data for their notification preferences.
Well, that was my question, so actually I'm sharing my whole screen here.
That I can quit sharing.
So, uh. I guess my question is. How does this work with, with this right here? Um, at first, like the way I have it now is. You select one thing and one thing only. Also, if you notice.
Wait, 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 one second. Chantel, I never heard back from you after we. Took, looked at this last design. Weren't, weren't you gonna iterate on this with Tori? What was the result? Chantel, are you here?
I did and Tori liked it. That's where we left off.
So, did she understood this better than the slider?
Yes, she did.
Okay. Um. What's your question, Ismael?
So first of all, notice that this became very long because we added this top part. Now we have to make it a scrollable view.
Yeah, I was worried about that. We can decrease some of the margins or spacing.
Uh, still won't be enough for a good amount of devices, but.
I know. Um, yeah, I, I did not like this design for that. Well, that was a big reason, um, but also. I'm surprised this was more clear. So what else?
Um, so there's that, and then how does this work with this? So. It says silence all notifications and you have, who will you see notifications from in chat? You, you can select both, like, like, how, how does this work with, with this? I guess is my question.
I wonder if maybe that should be at the bottom? Because I feel like everyone associates the top part with what's going on below.
Yeah, I thought about that too, but even then. It, there's a sacrifice because it's like kinda hidden and we probably want. It being such a small section, we want it to be known, like right away, that that's an option. Uh, like not, you might not need to silence or pause notifications if you saw that. You might say. Oh, well, I'll just do friend. But by the way, I think we'll probably do friends as default on a bunch of the bigger groups anyway. But even on smaller groups, I don't. Think so. I don't know, we have to play with it and see the data, but, um.
Yeah, but, but how does it work in terms of friends and? And this, so are these two things separate from each other?
Yes. They all three are separate.
Well, no, these two, these two are not separate, and the reason I say that is because you can only pick either or.
That's what I mean by separate. That's, yeah, they're.
But they're connected, like, like you, yeah, they're separate in terms of you can pick either or. But at the same time, they're connected, like they're just, you can pick either this one or this one. When I say separate, I mean, can, like, is this? Like, you know what I mean? Um. I feel like everyone is just, you get notifications from everyone. Friends, you get notification from friends, and then you either silence them or you have from friends. Cause you can't have friends selected on silence.
Yeah, I got a better idea. Um.
That's what gets confusing for me.
Chantel, we can have. Silence and pause be one section, not two separate sections, because. The choices are exactly the same. So it could say like silence. Or pause. Notifications. We don't need the word all. So silence or pause.
Well, yeah, I added that part of the recent design. It was actually without the all.
Yeah, I know, that's okay though. And then we just have one section and the, and there, it could be two buttons or check marks, toggles or whatever. That would be pause or silence. Next to east, like in the empty space on the right.
So it will say silence or pause notifications with a checkbox. Next to. Do I do silence and then have a checkbox next to pause?
Trying to think how to. Cause we don't need to, I mean, they're exact same options, so it's like. Either wanna silence it for an hour or wanna pause it for an hour. Or either wanna silence it for eight hours or wanna pause it for eight hours. I'm sure, once I see the right, the correct design, I'll be like, yeah, that's obvious. But right in the moment, it's not completely obvious to me, um. But you see what I mean? Like, we don't need.
Yeah, I do.
The two sections.
Like, I feel like a toggle, but I can't figure out what the toggle is.
Yeah. Oh, wait, 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 wait. I know how. The map list toggle. That's how. Well, except. Okay, so can I draw on the screen? Meeting tools. Calls, recording, transcripts. Team viewer. Uh, info? No. Uh. How do I draw on here? How about these dots? Oh, here again. Picture, picture, background effects. Come on. I swear I would draw, I've drawn on the screen before, right? Oh, wait, there's a pencil up here. That's.
I'm fairly sure you have to.
Um, let me find out. To join a screen during a meeting, you will need to use the whiteboard feature or a Chrome extension that provides annotation tools. Here's how. Use the whiteboard. Start a new meeting, open Google Meet and start or join a meeting. Select whiteboard. Click the three dot icon. At the bottom of the meeting screen and choose whiteboard. Three dot icon on the bottom.
I see a three dot icon and don't even see whiteboard.
Alright, whatever. Um, I'll just walk you through it. Okay, so. Silence or pause. Silence or pause notifications. Um. Got your header. Um. Then, you know how we have the map list slider toggle thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would work. For, like, you'd have pause on it or silence on it, except. The tricky part is, how do you activate? Like, they're not all. Paused or silenced, um. Almost like, okay, you need a, like a down arrow, like a, like a chevron that opens up. Even then. If I select one hour and it goes default, let's say pause.
Maybe keep the design as, just have it like be a dropdown.
That doesn't help. That's not, that's not where I'm going with this. Um. Because it's, the, the where I'm going with this solves the other problem of, does friends and everyone at the very top, does that affect? What's below it? And no, it does not. And when there's only one below it. You don't have to think that hard about. Which one you're doing.
Or if you have the same screen as a modal, like a pop-up, a drawer.
Yeah.
The, so just, I mean, for me, it's because we have a lot of options and the user might not know it's, it's could scroll where if it's a modal.
It's not just, it's not just that. It's thinking that the top section affects the bottom section.
Okay.
Um. So. Okay, okay, wait. How about this? That map list thing I just said, okay, Chantel?
Yes.
That would be the friends, everyone. Yeah.
I'll be friends for everyone, okay?
Yeah, so that way, it's, cause that one's always one or the other, no matter what. That will save some room here. And then you, we can decrease the padding quite a bit on these selections. So that'll be, let's try, let's just go with that as the only change. And I think the rest of it makes sense. So you know what I mean by the map list option from the map?
Yep.
Okay, so. Do you know what I mean, Ismael?
Um, no.
Go to the map. The very top map list. So this will say friends, everyone. So it'll start with friends by default.
This?
Yep.
Oh.
Right, so there's your choices right there. So it saves a lot of room, see? And it can only be one or the other. The, 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 uh, design we were looking at looked like it could be. Both or none. Or even like one, two, or both or none, like four choices, which is not really correct, right? So right now it's very clear, it's one or the other, that's it. You, you get one or the other. Friends or everyone, those are, those are your choices. But you can also silence them or pause them below, and then that's, then it's clear. Get it?
Okay.
So that everything else will be the same, but then I just need you to reduce the padding between. So it all gets more compact.
Okay, so that being said, this is separate from this. Which in terms of like, I'll think about in terms of API calls, Jerry. Um. Uh, should we use the same API for this?
To get the settings?
Well, we definitely need a separate query.
Uh, no, actually I just added it to that get notification settings.
You added it to the get them, okay.
Settings, it's, uh, I'll send, I'll send you the property name. You'll have to update the, uh.
Well, I don't think we're calling a query there at the moment, um.
We should, we should be getting it, cause how, how do we know when do we have our notifications muted until?
Yeah, that's called in the screen before this one.
We have that data. It will be on that screen.
Okay, so I'll just pass it to the screen, okay? So, um. When I wanna set this right here, this toggle. Um, I'm gonna be calling the mutation. Let me see here, uh, so this is the mutation, right?
Um, yes, but you are missing a prop for, um. Received notifications from.
Yeah, this one right here. So when I call this, when we toggle, I'm assuming we just need one, two, and three. We're not gonna need pause or silence until the notification type, because those two don't apply.
Hmm, but you're passing null. Um, is there no way that you could still just pass those values? Cause you'll have them from the query.
Uh. Hey, um, I guess I can pass some. Yeah. Oh.
Cause like if you pass null, that's like indefinitely silenced.
Yeah, that's why I was considering a separate API, but I guess. Uh. Cause like you're kinda resetting it here almost, even though it's the same value.
Mm-hmm.
But it's still same screen along with the other setting.
What's that?
But this is all still on the same screen with the other settings. They're just.
It is the same screen, but it's, it's kind of separate, you know what I mean? Like, when I say separate, I mean, it's just, um, like it doesn't need to stay there where the other two did. I don't know, I don't know. I guess both work. Uh, yeah, both of them work. Okay. So, okay, I'll, so just pass the same data back?
Right.
Okay, I'll try that. Calm down.
Okay, cool. Um, go back to, uh, Sigma when you come with that.
To where? Sigma, yeah.
Okay, so Chantel made the change. Chantel, let's make the button longer, so everyone, the word everyone. Isn't squished as bad in there? But, kinda get the idea. Yeah, I would actually make it like the whole thing thirty percent longer. It can be, it should be like extra long to like really stand out. But do you get the idea here then, Ismael? So it's gonna default in, in Jerry as well, so it's gonna default to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, to friends. Um, Jerry, can we handpick which chats, like, so some of them I would want. Maybe I just create a threshold of like if it's twenty or more. Um, it's friends only. As default.
So like when you go in a chat, if the chat, it has twenty people, it's a default friends?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a tough one because, well, I'm, I'm saying. No, I'm saying like based on the size of the group.
Mm-hmm.
Like, if there's five people, everyone should see the notifications.
Right, but you're saying, uh, when you join a group, if the group has more than twenty people, the default setting is friends.
I was thinking that, but then as I started thinking it through.
Twenty is a pretty low threshold.
Yeah, if it was like, yeah, that's true, it could be like fifty.
Cause, yeah, I mean, uh, you can even think of it like a, a fraternity chapter, you might have.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, cause even, yeah, it probably should be more like a hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's make the threshold a hundred.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Okay, great. So default will be. Everyone unless there's a hundred or more, then it's default at friends only.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. That's funny. Someone had just asked yesterday in the investors chat about muting or pausing or silencing notifications. I'm like. We actually just pushed to build. They were very happy. So it's great, good timing. Our chats are blowing up, so it's a good problem to have. We're getting a lot of activity.
Got an idea to make it more.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I'm gonna. We, we gotta make sure our photo upload is super, super, super clean. I heard you guys working on it yesterday.
Yeah, there's a new, um, expo library releasing any day that should be. Far better than what we're using.
Awesome.
They're telling us not to use the one. That they have had for a long time. It's buggy on Android.
There's also a feature I wanna talk to you guys about, cause what, the plan is to send a photographer out. There's also a feature I wanna talk to you guys about, because what the plan is to send a photographer out to um the nightlife venues where we have the nightlife chat going. And take photos of people. And have a QR code with the photographer and drop the photos in a photo topic. And have people scan the QR code to view their topic, and then allow the users to tag their friends. In the photo by clicking on the photo and entering a phone number that sends out an SMS. That they've been tagged in a photo, driving people in.
I like that, and Zane come up with that one?
I did this morning.
That's good.
I was thinking through that old Facebook strategy and how we could exercise it for circles, and I, there's finally a way.
I like that.
They they would tag them like in a check-in or in the chat?
So imagine you see a picture of your friends inside the circles app, and you know who they are, but they're not in the app for some reason. You can click the photo and it'll pop up a little modal where you can just enter their phone number, and basically it'll just add them as an external user. And send them a message, you've been tagged in a photo, but not show the photo, so they have to come into the app to see it.
Or we could show the photo blurry. That'd be interesting. That'd be funny.
Facebook used to do that with the email, you've been tagged in a photo, and then they'd send the email, but you couldn't see the photo.
Right, it was a growth hack.
That's what Tinder used to do.
I guess uh.
They still do it, but uh.
You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? It's it's working.
Yeah.
Because we should use it too.
We can get pretty far without it right now, so I talked to him this morning, we're gonna get a photographer out there.
Yeah, and that's such a common thing, like a lot of nightlife venues have of roaming photographer, and they post stuff on their website, like. Tried and true strategy.
Yep. Real quick, I do like the blur thing, I was actually listening to a tech podcast the other day, and they were saying something about Google. Was going to be blurring YouTube thumbnails, because they could potentially. You know, thumbnails could have potentially inappropriate content in it. You know, like they don't want to disable the video or hide the video, they're just gonna blur the thumbnail, but then they were commentary on it was. Curious minds want to know what's blurred now. Rather than.
Are they thinking like it'll actually have a higher conversion rate?
Right, right, like curious minds want to know what's behind the blur now.
Makes sense.
Is that big enough?
Um, let me check when. Let me see Figma again real quick there. Um, no, I'll go even longer, like.
Okay.
Look look at um his emulator.
Like the full link.
Yeah, maybe not quite that long, but like pretty long, you know?
Okay.
Because it really stands out, and we do want that to be clear. And it's easy to tap. Yeah, I think that's. Actually, I like that, I like when buttons are long, um, yeah, I like, I leave that length that you have there, Ismail.
That's fine.
And then you just need to get the toggle in it. So while we're doing that, Jerry, will you explain, you were telling me in Slack just before stand-up that you spent a bunch of time on a dynamic link?
Yeah, so this was really weird, I might have to join in from my phone, but. Uh, the way that we were doing the funnel is that we keep the users on our domain, like go dot circles dot com. And what happens is when you click the funnel, it actually wasn't opening up, opening up the dynamic link, even though I had the app. It was, it was not doing it in the production environment, but it was doing it in the QA environment. And after much research, what I found out is. Because you were all, you were on the same domain, and you're navigating to another URL on the same domain. The dynamic link does not activate. So in order to activate the dynamic link, you have to go to another domain. And then that's what trips Safari into activating the dynamic link. I was fighting through it, because I was wondering why the dynamic link wasn't working in the production environment. But now, I moved it to, I moved our feedback page to circles dot com slash feedback instead of go dot circles dot com. And then when you click next, it redirects to go dot circles dot com. But go dot circles dot com is what triggers the dynamic link and gets you in the app.
Okay, does it work?
What's that?
Does it work?
Yeah, um. Let me, let me send you a a. An example, I'll send it in development, so. Let me go here and. This isn't a funnel, this is like where you get redirected to. But it's gonna be uh circles dot um. Okay, and it looks like this, circles dot com, if you check what I put in development chat. And then you click it, and then you click next. And then you get the dynamic.
Okay. And you got the name in there? That's good.
So with the name, John, uh Square has the option to create customers without names.
Okay, I see.
You know, at a minimum, I'm only seeing if they have a phone number, so it's very possible that they could record a customer and their only identifier is that phone number.
Yeah.
There will be cases where you, we could start a core flow without it, without a name.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, just just letting you know on that.
Okay. Is it supposed to have a a right-facing Chevron on the button?
I think so, I um. I I had put a different component in place of that button.
Okay.
Uh, to test it, and the the this was what took a lot of time yesterday, like I thought it was the link. That I would, because I was redirecting from JavaScript without a direct input from the user. Or if I was using an anchor link, and turns out neither was the right answer, and the right answer was you have to change your domain.
Uh huh. Well, glad you got it figured out. Yeah, let's do the Chevron, and then so this will, it's opening the app for me, which is great, but if I didn't have the app, it would take me to the app store, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Cool, and it would um be the different, the shorter onboard version, right? Where I would present it to favorite this business.
Right.
Right after authentication. Okay, that's awesome, we gotta test it, but that's great.
We need, we need testing, uh, just the significant amount of my time yesterday was making that link work like it is. Because I have to create a whole new link, and this and this is kind of what I was saying uh with this other link that we're gonna do for like SMS. That we don't want it to always be a dynamic link in some cases, and this is kind of a warm-up for that. Because learning how iOS interprets dynamic links. This was, this was a interesting experience, because I was thinking if you just click on something, and it's a dynamic link, it opens in the app. The answer is no, if you are already on that same domain name.
Uh, gotcha.
It could be, and it it could just be a subdomain, like I'm going from circles dot com to go dot circles dot com. Like that, that's enough for iOS to pick it up.
So. Okay, so where where do we stand with that SMS being updated?
I just pushed it up to QA, I can, I could send it to Prime now.
Yeah, can you send me an example, a sample one too? Is that possible?
Um. I could send it from. I could just send one, it's uh, I couldn't trigger it from that flow, because we're now disabling that flow on, you know, internal users. So it wouldn't be exactly easy for me to trigger that flow, but I can just like copy the text, I like copy the code and just send it to you.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Just want to get an idea of what it looks like.
Yep. Okay, um, one more question. Um, when I use, hmm, well, this one's gonna be tricky. When a user clicks on friend or. Or, or everyone, do they have to, like, when they toggle it, is it done, or do they have to click confirm?
I would say done.
Like, they don't have to click confirm for that?
What do you think we should do, is it as far as like?
Well, I guess it's tricky, because we can't leave the screen without confirming, thinking about it now. Because it's either cancel or confirm, so.
So then the button highlight, so confirm, it should be on confirm then? Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, it's just gonna make it a little more tricky, but yeah, I think it has to.
Okay, but that also helps, well, wait, uh, maybe not. I was thinking about, because the the network time. There's like gonna be a little delay unless we put a loader on it.
But but there's still no way to leave the screen without any cancel, which can lead to them thinking it never got done.
Yeah, cancel would make me think it didn't get done. So yeah, confirm, yeah, it should be on confirm.
Uh, Jerry, I hmm, so in the query. I would need you to always, hmm, I would need you to always return if it's friends or everyone, so that I can compare. To if the user, if the user's like, it's different than what's coming from the query, then I would call it.
That should happen, that.
It should happen at the moment, okay, so um what would it be called, the new? Is it gonna be a new field or?
I sent it, it's a receive notifications from.
Um. Oh. Okay, and that one would be part of. This query right here, the get all group notification settings. And it'll be in data, right? Under data. Let's see, uh, yeah, it would be inside data.
Okay. So Joe, you're gonna push it to uh production?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm getting a a test sent. So I have to copy the code, I'm setting myself a tech test first.
Cool.
So it's returning null, Jerry, can we have it either friends or everyone, or does null mean something and? Like by default, it should just return everyone, right?
It's returning null?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
User settings. Send me the payload, that shouldn't be sending null.
Hmm, okay. That new five-second ping for. Um, for location is very annoying when it comes to looking at the network data, because it keeps popping up every five seconds.
I don't think that's gonna be quite efficient. In the long run, we're gonna need to find some sort of happy medium. It's not five, every five seconds all the time, right?
It is. From what I'm seeing.
Isn't it every five seconds after? You um, well, I guess you have to open the app.
Right, while the app's open.
Right.
Being open, but it is every five seconds after that, like you can see mine. Here, report, report, report. Location, so like. Got called like ten times already.
Yeah. How do we? Not, I don't want to um. Overrun reporters. Obviously, for testing, it's not, like if we're just, if they're in development mode, Jerry, we don't want that happening, what's the best way to?
That's, that's all for an in.
Yeah. You can turn it off in development mode, right? Ismail?
Um, I think so, yeah. I think I'm usually here soon, he's going to enable this, so if I'm not turning off in development, I think we should, it's it's annoying.
Yeah, that's not necessary at all. Is it working, Jerry, by the way? So like, what if, what if we push this to production, let's just say, and then. I went out, got my haircut. Is it gonna, is it ready, like to?
We're getting the data, I'll just have to see. I'll just to see if there's um. Queries that we can interpolate from it, like. I'd have to view your, is this from build thirty-two?
No, I don't think there's a build yet.
Okay. Yeah, once I start getting the data. We could run some queries off of it and see what we find. All right, and I'm sending you an SMS now.
All right. I'm reviewing it. Is it still gonna have this download link?
No, it's gonna be the the open.
And will you have tracking on this to know how many people click on the link?
Correct.
If we wanted to do a text that had a different word, what if it said your con, what if we changed the word just? So we're contact just joint circles, let's say we dropped it and we had an A B test. Um, is it possible to do that, or is that gonna?
Yeah, actually, I do log the the body. The SMS, so yeah, we could support that.
Okay, just wondering. Maybe try different emojis or things like that, see what works better. But, um. I think. I wanna make a small change.
Uh, Jerry, could you have it return either friends, all caps, or all, all cap? Basically similar to what we pass to it?
Yeah, that, that should be, uh, I'm going back and I'm saying. Why is it not sending anything right now?
Okay. Uh, just kinda heads up, because I have to leave that like around two, because it's Friday. And then after that, I'm pretty much need to get prepared for my travel and have like a million things to do. So if we can get that all done before I go, that would be awesome, um. And then I'll have this PR up. And then after that, all the heavy lifting should be done for this, so if there any like, any tweaks in terms of. Um. Words or anything like that, or small stuff, anybody should be able to change them easily.
For sure. How far are you on this? When, when you're done with this, I have a couple of minor style changes to it.
Well, we have like forty minutes, so if I told you it fixes it, I'm just, I have one more thing left on me for Jerry to.
Yeah, I'm checking that.
Yeah, no, I, so in a quick update, I got the two models in, the one for. Lobby and the one for what's streaming, group chat, so those should pop up once on iOS and Android. Um, for each user, it's still needs testing. I bet again, if there's anything wrong, it's very minor tweaks. Um, because like all the heavy lifting is done there as well. But I think it got it to working the way we wanted, but, you know.
So if you, if I tap on the, uh, message icon on the nav bar, that one?
Twice, well, yeah, the first, the first time you do that, you'll see that model.
Yeah. Um, I had a question for you. I think you worked on this a while back. Remember the piggy bank? We were gonna have the red dot on the piggy bank if you level up. I don't recall seeing it, but then again, I haven't leveled up in a while.
Do you think we have it?
Um.
Uh, let me see, I'm pretty sure we had it.
Let me ask Todd on his. Test phones, um.
We had it here and we had it, and you go to like here on this one.
We do, okay, I've never seen it. Leave it there for a sec, Todd, Todd, have you ever? Either one, have you ever seen the red dot on that piggy bank?
I, I don't recall, um, but should it be on one of the?
Would you have to level up? Um, do you have any, uh? Accounts where you haven't leveled up yet, like you haven't added a profile picture?
I'm, uh. I don't think so. I think all of them have a profile. Let me check real quick. In a moment.
Let me see, let me just double check the code.
Yeah, yes, man, I'll figure, I figured out what was going on with the, the null for the, the name, so like. I type, that's pushing up now, it'll be up in two minutes.
Alright, sound good. Uh, let's see. Red dots. Red circle, yeah, there it goes. And that goes inside the. The level up. And even have the number one in it, if you remember, we added that.
Right. Yeah, I haven't tested it or seen it.
Uh, well, you didn't level up, did you?
No, but, um, Todd has on some test phones.
Did you see it, Todd? I remember.
I'm going through these phones here, um, all of them have. Profile pics.
What about as far as? Ha- do, have any of them invited somebody? So you have. A friend invited, so you have that checkbox, but you just, all you need to do is add either a favorite entertainment or a favorite place?
Yeah, wait a minute, um, hold on, I do have, we're referring to the, the red dot on the bank, piggy bank.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, that, how did you make that happen there?
Well, I hardcoded it at the butt.
Yeah.
By code. Now. Yeah, I see it on a profile screen, the piggy bank there. Um, but you're looking at the actual level up screen?
Well, this one or this one.
Either way.
Yeah, I see, I see one right there.
Hard coded.
Yeah, it should be on both.
Hard code it back, Ismail?
It's, uh, okay.
Well, I, well, I hardcoded it.
Hold on, everyone, stop talking for a second, just talk, hard code it back, okay. Todd, take a look at Ismail's screen.
Got it.
That's what you're looking for?
I have it.
The red dot.
Correct.
You have that on one of the devices?
Correct.
Okay, and this screen and the home screen?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. So did it recently level up?
Um, I don't recall.
Well, he doesn't have to read the sales and look, he has, he has to not click on here or here after he leveled up.
Yeah.
So if he clicks on it, it goes always.
Take a screenshot of it.
Yes. I just fucking clicked on it, and like you said, it went away. God damn it.
Okay.
It was definitely.
I mean, we, I get an idea of what it looks like, because he hardcoded it, um, I'm just wondering if we wanna make it bigger and a little bit more over the piggy bank, like. It, it obviously didn't get you to click on it until just now, so.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't notice it until.
That's what I mean, and that's a, you know, that's not like ideal, you're not noticing it.
And it sucks because I'm using so many phones, um. At different times, I, I don't, not recognizing things right away on some phones.
Yeah, hard code that again for me, please, Ismail?
Uh, and the screen?
Either one, yeah, that's fine. It'll be the same, right? Like it position.
Yeah, it'll be the same thing.
Yeah, can you increase the size of it by fifty percent?
By fifty percent, uh.
Or even a hundred percent, like a good amount, like double, almost double.
That's fifty percent.
Okay.
Awesome to make it now like fifteen or eighty, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, go down a little bit. On it. One second, I'm gonna, okay, I feel like, would that be a little more visible for you, in class?
Yeah, yeah, because that looks more. I'm kinda comparing it to the notification on the messages.
Yeah.
Uh, nav. Button, which is pretty good size, and so that's pretty close.
Yeah, okay, let's leave it like that. Ismail, make sure the corner, the radiuses are enough that there's no square. At all, like, I feel like it's a little bit flat on the top. More.
Um.
But it.
Uh, let's see, twenty-six, uh. No.
No, it's pretty wrong, all the way around?
Yeah.
I'm zoomed in as far as I can zoom in.
If I do fifteen, that's like the good, you know, let me change.
Okay.
Yeah, that's around, that's like a good.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Todd, when you click on it, it removed.
It did.
Okay, good, that's what we want, and it navigated you to the rewards store, right?
It did.
Okay, okay, so. That's functioning. We, we wouldn't want it to just be there forever, that would be.
Right.
Effective, okay. Okay, cool. Um. Let me go through it, there was just a couple little odds and then questions I had, Ismail. That was one of them.
Uh, I just wanna see the other one, I wanna make sure it's also working.
Hello, John?
Yes, I'm here.
I will be back in thirty minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
It's copy this here as well. Uh, let's do this. And let's see, let's see then, it's true. So this is how, now, this one won't, wouldn't appear, obviously, but, uh, we'll, we'll just be like this here. Does that also look good?
Yeah, that looks good. Why is there one on that point?
Oh, that's just because I'm hard coding stuff, so just that would fill, so don't, don't worry about that, because these are like all shared, but. You won't see that.
That makes me, that big red dot makes me wanna click on that, so that's.
So, alright, so those changes are in.
Excellent, okay, good. Um, where did you leave off on the screen that you were just working on with the friends?
Yeah, now I have to go back there. Uh, I need to. Basically, the last touches here. So it starts with everyone, um, I'm gonna have it start where, um.
No, it's gonna start with, well.
We'll have to, it's gonna start with the user settings, but by default, that should be everyone.
But there's gonna be a threshold, by default, over a hundred people in the group, it'll be friends only.
Well, that, that's all controlled by the backend.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
And I'm already accounting for that, so we're, we're good.
I wonder if we should make an exception for the maggot army chat and just leave it how it is, because they're silenced already. What if we made an exception for the maggot army chat? Jerry?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna go refill my water.
If we just let the maggot army chat as is, where it's just, everyone sees the notifications, but they're all silenced. Kinda seems to be working. I'm already complaining.
Okay, the maggot army chat as it is, like, I, I did not retroactively update all the groups.
Mm-hmm.
We can, we can do that once this goes live. Um. Yeah, I think what we should do i- is like for. I'm almost thinking that. For the people, like, when we put this live, for the people who are really active in the chat, we should keep it as is.
Maybe, uh, let me, let's, we'll talk about it when Ismail drops. Oh, this now, let's make this bit a little bit better, so like. Um, we can make it compacted a little more, so where it says silence notifications. I would, um. Decrease the padding exactly where your cursor is. No, well, there too, maybe not so much there, but under silence.
Okay, um, let's see here, so we wanna go for like sixteen like that.
Yeah, but leave that now, don't change that one anymore. Go below silence, yeah, there.
So move it, he changes or no? Put this sixteen or no?
But leave the change you just made, that'll be fine.
Leave like that, okay?
Yeah, and then we'll go.
Here.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Cut it in half.
It costs for some only, yeah, so it just took it from here and everywhere else too. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's making it more.
Because they're all shared components.
No, that, that's a win, okay, and so it actually made them all equal then, didn't it? So that's.
Yeah, because they're all the same row component.
Right, 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 okay.
And this one I can do a little bit more, so sixteen, you said it there.
Cool, okay, yeah, now squeezing in there, um. Okay. If you, so if you do under silence. It'll do all of the rows, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they're shared at the moment. Unless you, I don't want me to override it.
Nah, well, yeah. Sh- shave a little bit more off. Couple more, more pixels.
Yeah.
From all of them.
Just two, and. Go. And. I wanna. I don't have to go. Up your change and something. So, yes, so I know, I don't know. Um. I don't know, it's like, uh, okay, maybe it's not like, uh. Oh, oops. I know. I am on. Now. Um. Going back, uh, just make an option off. And run back. Choose switch. Okay, friends. I guess I need to destruct the object. Be constructive. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so now, as you can see, we have here, like, zero.
I see, um. In the, is it, it's just controlling underneath silence?
Yeah, see.
Okay, I, I didn't realize you were making it, you were overriding it. I was saying just shave it everywhere, but that, that's fine, you already did it, so.
Oh, I, oh, you're doing an override and you said yes.
No, you missed, you misunderstood me, that's okay. You got it done, so, yeah, then.
I'm gonna do it for pause as well.
Yeah, let's equalize it there.
Am I good? Um.
Alright, so we should be, that's looking good, we should be able to fit those screens out to, uh. Um.
Well. It's physical. All. Remembering, uh. Uh, you, it's equal to. All, all, as you, oh, yeah, okay, so they're equal. So I'm saying here, if they are equal, oh, I just want to do if they are equal, then don't disable it with any ability. Okay, uh, cool. I'm just getting this button to work when you act, like, see, because like, everyone is already selected, the confirmation should not be enabled, and if you select friends, they should. Um, so that's part one. Now, part two, I have to actually get it to, um. Call the function, so. Yes, yes, here. Okay, and then over here, we're gonna have to pass in, um.
the other parameters. Which, with this one, will we use their settings? Done up, well, I guess, yeah, sounds possible, it's gonna be user settings. Education, okay. So now this should, this should actually enable it, um, let's try to, and then, if you click, oh, okay, we have to, that's the last thing I have to fix. Need to modify this on this. Okay, yeah, maybe this, I can do this, okay, perfect. So if I do, let's do cancel, because I don't wanna do that, I'm starting to turn it to friends. And let's see how this goes. So we're gonna have an API call, which got called. Um, with the parameters, yada, 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 and I don't see the other parameter really enough, okay? Go back here, notifications. Hmm, yeah, uh, oh, yeah, I didn't pass it, that's why. Um, the newest one is gonna be this one. And that one would be, yeah, okay. Well, not here, actually, oops. Um, here, oh, I am passing it. Weird. Um, let's see if it's picking it up. Yeah, so picked it up. It didn't actually make. Uh, Jerry? Be here. When I'm passing this parameter, the, um, receive notification from, it, it stopped picking it up.
Did you update your graph QL?
Oh, no.
The query?
Yeah. Um, that one would be for, uh, set, and then this one would, would you have to add it here, right? Like this?
Yeah, and the type would actually be, receive notifications from type, let me, let me send that, you that.
Yes, I mean.
There we go.
So this would be like that. All are good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so now we're gonna go here, um, so notifications, we're gonna have everyone selected, which is correct. And then we're gonna go and choose friends, and then we're gonna pick that, and that's gonna, oops, okay, through an error. Uh, let's see what that error was.
That's report location.
Oh, no, right, let's do that again. Error, graph QL fills.
Oh, you have to add it, so, in your graph QL.
Uh-huh.
Add it.
Down here?
Yeah.
Okay, like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, while you're doing that, I see Amin, Amin is here. Um, Amin, did you see the messages I sent you in Slack yesterday, I've got a couple of issues with
Yeah, yeah.
the, um, adding members? You see that, I could, I hit the save, and it did not navigate, did you see the screen record on that?
Yeah, I saw it. And I, I was working on an issue that we talked about with, uh, Ismael yesterday. We got in, it was like a wrong member count when you're moving from members.
Yeah.
And it was working for me, it was redirecting, so maybe I'm missing something to produce it.
But what does that have to do with the save button not navigating?
Yeah, cause like whenever, uh, cause the way how I was testing that, uh, issue that we talked about yesterday, is I press on the save, so I can see whether the member count updates correctly or not, and it was like redirecting me back to the main chat.
Um, did you try adding seven people, I don't know if seven is a magic number, but I added seven people two different times in a row.
Let me, let me try and see. Oh, maybe because it has, um, I'm not sure.
No, it's, if you're thinking, cause it's a contact, I don't think so, because the first time when I did not screen record, it was seven, uh, circles users. So I, I screen recorded, I recreated it a second time, but don't be misled by who I chose.
Okay.
Yeah, the first time was all circles users.
Okay, so, in the video, did you press it in the end?
Yeah, I pressed save, and then it doesn't navigate, you see the notification that it says I added the people.
Yeah, I got the notification as well, like, uh, uh, I got on my end, that you added, like yesterday, when you did that, that I got it too. So they were added, just like in the video, I'm not able to see that you press save, save.
Yeah, there's a, there's a loader.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see.
I just, I, I might have tripped their eyes, because I double checked to make sure I was screen recording.
Yeah, I, I see it, um.
Okay, yes, it does for sure save, uh, the system message shows up as seven people added, but then the problem is, I could hit save a second time, and you'll see, that's what I sent you in the next, uh, is that, um, save created another system message. And I don't know, did I add seven people, did I duplicate the group members, actually, I haven't checked that. Let me double check and make sure it didn't duplicate.
Hey, I think I get it down to work, um. Uh, can I show this real quick, just to make sure the functionality is there, cause there was a few tricky things I have to do here.
Yeah, for sure, it doesn't, doesn't look like it duplicated the members, but it definitely sent a second system message. And second notification. Okay, I'll go ahead.
Okay, so let's start off by, it starts with everyone, right? So you can click friends, or they can click like, let's just do friends for now. Click save, um, on confirm, or I guess you have to pick one, um, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, you don't wanna have to pick one, because you don't necessarily want to silence.
Correct.
It's always okay.
Yeah, okay, let's just pick one for now, let's just go over the flow, and if we click this, you can see that, now it's silence for one hour, and it's only for, well, now it's silent, so it really wouldn't matter if it's friend or not. If you resume that, I had it where it saved status, and now it sees data front, and then it go back to everyone, cause by default, it was everyone, so I mean, the value actually changed.
Yeah, that top one, that top one, yeah, should never change unless the user changes it.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is, it was everyone, and I changed it to friends and a state.
Good, good.
So now, I guess the last step is just I have to like, be able to change that.
Couple little things, couple little things, go back. Um, hit one, hit one hour.
Okay.
Hit eight hours. They go down, go down to pause and hit one hour.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure it didn't like double up or anything like that, okay?
No, no, it doesn't.
Cool, uh, good, um, are we not doing that little check mark that we have in the Figma design?
Uh, I just saw that, yeah, I just saw that, it wasn't proveniential design, so I'd have to edit, I, running out of time, to be honest, so I'll, I'll see if I can get it in. Um, yeah, I have to leave that two, and then after that, I'm literally gonna like push a few things, and then I ha- I, like I said, I have like a million things I have to prepare for, cause I'm leaving very early in the morning.
Right, I wouldn't worry about the check marks, not really.
Yeah, so I just wanna try to get this in real quick, where you can select these without the, one of these, and then I think we should be good to go for its PR.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, I had another question for you and everybody, cause Amin and Jerry did answer, do you recall also, this for the whole team, I, I, I don't remember that we made it, so if I have a message in my lobby, and the message came from a topic, this mail, we, we always just navigate to the main chat, not the topic? If I, if I send you a message in a topic, and it's sitting in your lobby, and you open the messages.
Via notification or via like just clicking on it?
Just lobby method.
Yeah, that'll take me to main chat always, it won't take me to the topic.
It's always been like that, huh?
Mm-hmm. It, it only takes it to the actual topic if you click on the notification.
Right, okay, so I do wanna ask Todd and Chantel real quick, and Danny, if you're there, um, do you guys prefer that, like, okay, so what happened was, I had a re- there was a reaction to a message, and I don't know who reacted, I just saw like, there's a, there's a message in my lobby, someone reacted, I tapped on it, and it took me into the main chat, I had no idea where that reaction was, it was actually in a topic, and that, it was a reaction to the message in the topic. I felt like it was kinda weird that I wouldn't be navigated to that topic, do you guys prefer just getting ma- navigated to the main chat, or should we get navigated?
Oh, it's, to me, that's confusing, just as you're saying, I've had the same uh, concern or, or a question, like where, where is this reaction coming from?
Right.
And I've had to dig into topics to try and find it, sometimes I don't even find it, I'm not really sure where it came from.
Yeah, what do you think, Chantel? Chantel here?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm, um, so.
Yeah, so like, you, you were messaging about like a billboard, you know, in, I think that was our topic. If I, if you open your messages from the lobby, would you want it to go into the topic or just the main chat with the preview, I feel like it should go to the topic, right?
Yeah, if it's in a topic that it happened, then yeah, it should go to the topic, I've had that happen before, what you're talking about, and been kinda like, what?
Right.
But I, I also just wish it would just go to the message, but I know that's not possible, but, yeah.
Probably, probably is with more effort, but like, at lea- at the very least go to the topic, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, alright, we're on the same page on that, so, um, is that, um, a front-end thing then, Ismael, to make it go open to the topic?
Um, yeah, well, it probably is gonna need, yeah, it can probably look at the last message, and if the last message is a topic message, it has a topic object, it can probably navigate to that topic, yeah, should be doable.
Okay, I'll talk to Amin about that later on, um. Yeah, it seemed confusing to see the reaction, it doesn't take you like to the topic, things like that. Okay. Does that need any work on the backend, Jerry, for that to happen?
Well, I think if it returns a topic object, like this mail says, we should be good. Let me check the, um, last message, sorry.
Uh, Jerry, when I'm passing only the received notification form, and the rest is null, why is it silencing the notification for me?
Because you're past.
So I'm gonna go here, I'm gonna click that, um, now it's gonna be a success, now the parameters I'm passing, as you can see, are um, friends, normal, right, cause I only wanna change it to friends.
Okay, so you're not passing anything in the, uh?
Yeah, cause I, I, I don't wanna pause or silence, I just wanna change it from everyone to friends.
Maybe let me, I could handle that from the backend, then.
Okay, because now if I go back here, it'll say, uh, well, actually, it doesn't say silence here, it's actually fine, but if I go the other way around, now if I click friends here, oh wait, the backend is crashing, I think, oh, are you guys pushing anything?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, let me do this.
But never mind, but yeah, basically, we need to have it where, where it doesn't silence it, if I pass that.
Mm-hmm. Um, I got, I know what we gotta do.
Yeah, cool, um, and let me see, let me just, no, well, so now it's working, John, where you can just select it, and it will work, now let's just select it with an hour delay, and boom, alright, I think we're good to go.
Awesome.
Okay, so I need to, let me push everything, uh, Jerry does need to do some backend changes, so it doesn't silence it, and all, but he, he's aware, guys, we just talked about that, um, and then he actually be ready for testing, I'm gonna add this, come mega, which is, um.
Hope, uh, those cancel and confirm buttons display on all the phones and are cropped at the bottom, um, you know, we probably, probably could reduce padding at the top of this.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, just to, um, get a little more.
Where, over silence?
Very, very top now, who will see the notification?
Who will see, reduce the padding there, you said, okay, um, see, we will see those notifications. Uh, screw, okay. On, on off this one? Um, who's the notifications, this is this one? Um, I guess, wait, where's that coming from? I think the container, probably. No, what am I looking at, okay? Oh, there we go.
Nice, okay. Um, maybe a little more?
What else is adding to this? Uh, having as it have we have, having bottom, and beautiful.
When, when we get a build, Chantel, I think your, your phone tends to cut stuff off at the bottom, so just make sure the cancel and confirm buttons are visible for you.
Okey-dokey.
Is that good?
Yeah, I think that's good, and, um, if we needed to move the buttons, we can, so we'll just, we'll, we'll go with this, and we'll see how it goes on Chantel's phone.
Okay, um, that sounds good, let me push all this, um.
Ismael, when you're done, let me know, I have a question.
Huh?
I have a question for you.
Oh, yeah, what's up?
I need to share my screen so you can follow me, uh, gonna be quicker.
Okay. I just submitted it up here, okay, cause I have to leave it's own, it's two, but yeah, sure, let's do it.
Yeah, uh, so, what, there's an issue here, like when trying to add, from, to, and we need to save, normally it should redirect you back to the chat. And we're debugging this, it's because this code that was added, like you worked on this new, um, follow model there?
Hmm.
You see how?
Are you talking about the, when you go to?
Like, when you wanna add a member, so group?
Okay.
If you are not friends, normally you should see a model, right?
You, normally you see a model?
That asks you to follow this, those.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright, alright, so when you worked on that, you added some code regarding the save button, and you see here, like, where I think the code before, we were just navigating, like we were just navigating after the, um, the query, mutation, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a condition, and this condition, it's not working when you just like, like you can just reduce it easily, if you can just select, and to save, this, it's never true.
So I'm. Um, I mean, I, I was saving and move, uh, is this, uh, did you pull the latest code?
Yeah, this is like, like thirty-two.
Thirty-two, this is the old code, so the new code should look a little different.
Okay.
As a development, that's, it should be all in there, so.
Which you fix, uh, okay. It should be fixed, uh, okay.
Uh, yeah, we'll do, do, double-check, make sure to pull development and then go ahead and try, try it out.
And it's cool.
Cuz I was playing with that yesterday with John, and I think we, it's all working, as expected. There's actually quite a bit of every factor, cuz you know, it's not a model anymore, it's a drawer.
Okay.
And it has like multiple people and.
Yeah, that's wonderful new chat.
But wait, you.
That was not the what streaming, yeah.
That was not the what streaming, yeah. Um. Okay, keep, keep going for now, let me see, maybe I, I might have left a value hard code when I was testing.
Um, okay, so, let me just delete. So it works from deletion, we add. Yeah, no works, so yeah, uh, John, I don't think that's issue, it's gonna be there because it's fixed, um, as because it was like work in progress.
Hmm.
As Ismail finished working on this, it's, actually was fixed.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, well, maybe Ismail, if you get, if you get some chance, uh, later on this afternoon, maybe take a look at the, um, the what streaming, unless you can fix that real quick.
Yeah, yeah, well, I have to go now cuz I'm already late, but I will, when I come back, I'll see what's, what's, what's going on there, um, I, like I said, I might have, um. Might have had a, uh. Cuz, uh, I, I wasn't part of that what streaming group, so I couldn't test it. Um, but I got the group key from. From Jerry, and it, it should only show if the group key. Is true, so let me see that real quick in chat, so now we go to in chat, um, and then I have the condition where. Uh. Let me see, streaming, and. Oh, here it is, it's streaming state, okay, and then this should only be set to true, so the conditions are as follows, if. Oh, okay, okay, I know the problem, those, those, I, I, instead of putting equal to, I put not equal to that group. So it would show in anything but what's streaming.
Okay.
Okay.
Glad we caught that one, okay, so, got that, can you get a PR for all this?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get a PR for that one.
Okay, great, and then, so you have, um, everything's all bundled in PRs now, ready for review?
Yes, it should be, all good to go.
Okay, great, well, um, just keep an eye on Slack, you know, in case anyone has questions and, um, have safe travels and enjoy yourself. Get some reps.
Thank you.
We'll catch you when you get back, have a good trip.
All right, thank you.
Ismail.
Love you guys, yeah.
Safe travels.
Thank you, appreciate it. Bye.
Okay, so, Amin.
Time to party?
Um, yeah, go, oh.
It's that time to party, right? He's gone now?
Sure thing, so, um, I mean, the, uh. That bug is not the bug, that defect, it's, it's all good then to save.
Yeah, it is, it's fixed.
What about the members where the member count got thrown off?
Yeah, I worked on that and fixed it.
Great.
I, I had a question regarding it, Ismail pointed it yesterday, uh, let me, I'm sure it should be, uh, should screen. So here it says eleven members, including me, and if I do a show more, this is me, do we want to, like?
I, um. Do we wanna show you? Probably not, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, cuz like, I can.
Yeah, that's, that's no good, you don't want that.
Yeah.
Um, cuz that's like leaving the group.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
I thought we, that, like, I remember trying to tap my own name and the check mark did not uncheck. Like, something changed between bill thirty and thirty-two.
I don't remember that, but I think it's, uh, like, to be safe is to not return. The logged-in user or the current user in this way.
That is the safest, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess we can just do it from a backend, uh, Jerry, can you, can you confirm this?
What do you?
Like the query that, uh, gets us back all the members? Would you, would you verify whether it returns? The, the current user, cuz we don't want it to be returned in that list.
Want to return the current user, uh, yeah, we can, uh. I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Member?
Hmm.
Get all group member?
I, let's, uh, let me see, what's, um. Yeah, get all group members, yeah, if the square.
All right. We're making excellent progress.
All right, I'll push that up.
Nice, thank you.
That will prevent your own name from showing.
Yeah, and also, like.
Yeah.
It will have the correct number count, I might need to do one front-end change with this changed, uh, Jerry's data, but it's not big, it's just like a one-line change.
Okay.
Um, that, yeah, that was regarding this, like I fixed the member count, like, uh, the image size in the cookies list and, uh, to follow. Uh, also, I worked on the SOT, um, in the onboarding, like, I remember how, uh. I mean, it's not the winner here, but just like to show, okay, it's, yeah, like, if you have full SOT and you add. Like in the onboarding, this would refresh.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Well, I made it like, like this now, like if you, normally would refresh if there's empty spaces, empty place, but if it's full, nothing happens, it's what we just like this.
Yeah. Yeah, you could always remove somebody here and then.
Yeah, when you remove it, you can add back, yeah.
Right, right, okay, cool.
And there's the, I, yeah, those are three things that I fixed, um, uh, the other thing that I was working on is like, um. I still didn't can reproduce it, it's like there's an issue with Todd, I had, I guess Todd is on to a button, like they had. The app, like the Android, uh, I'm not sure Android, but like, when the app on the background and, and background, the app is crashes because of the location work we did. I think the data is crashes for that, so. There's some stack trace there, just like, uh, I'm not able to pinpoint exactly, like why grabbing location fails when you on background the app. Hmm, I, I'm suspecting because it's Android, we doing that like too soon. Like Android has, like maybe it needs to, uh, spin up again the app or do some reinitialization in the background. Where it's, it is slow for some reason, and we trying to fix the location too soon and crashes for some reason, that's my idea, I just like. I can't, I just like still didn't pinpoint, at pinpoint exactly where this is happening, so I can fix it, so that's what I'm looking at right now, cuz it's, it's a crash and, um, and it's, it's. Um, yeah, so I have this issue also, like, another Android issue is like, um. Let me show the whole thing, that one I can reproduce, it can like happen easily.
But, and while you're doing that, so you're saying that you, you didn't get to the bottom of the location, correct?
Yeah, I still didn't get, yeah.
You, but you, you're not giving up on it?
I, I'm still working on it, I'm just like sharing things out, like I have them on my, my mind to work on today, so.
Gotcha.
Organize, if you have me, me to work on other stuff.
Okay.
Is it, is it safe to delay the location request? As a start, or, or no, not yet?
Yeah, I can delay it, I can do the delay, just, I'm still not sure this is the issue.
That's the reason, right, okay.